We are live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Council member Bowman?
Here.
Council member Farrelletto?
Here.
Council member Gullumbeck?
Here.
Council member Noakowski?
Here.
Council president Pridgen?
Aki.
Majority leader Rivera? President Protem Scanlon?
Present.
Council member Wingo?
Present.
Council member Wyatt?
Here.
Coramis present.
Thank you, as we begin our meeting with our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America for the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our chaplain, the Reverend Al, Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
For my scripture today, I'd like to just pull a sentence from Hosea, chapter two, verse fifteen. This is referring to Israel, and of course, as many of you remember, there was a Buffalo delegation that both council president and I were part of to Israel, and they're suffering through the COVID crisis there, just as we are. This is what the scripture says. "I will return her," meaning Israel, "her vineyards to her and transform the valley of trouble into a gateway of hope." Let me say it again. "I'll return her vineyards to her and transform the valley of trouble into a gateway of hope." Everyone on the council is well aware of the valley of trouble that we find ourselves in today. As individual districts, as a city, county, state, nation, world, the valley of trouble is indeed all around us, but this scripture talks about the valley of trouble being transformed into a gateway of hope. I heard a phrase a couple of days ago that's just resonated in my spirit. The phrase was this: Renaissance of Hope. Renaissance of Hope. Let that be like water to dry ground, a renaissance of hope. It's easy to feel hopelessness, or fear, or panic, and so many of our citizens are there, and leaders can join them easily. But the gate, the valley of trouble, being transformed into a gateway of hope, a renaissance of hope. I want us to be hope bearers, hope spreaders, hope increasers, hope multipliers, in not just in our district, but to our city as well. Let's bow in prayer to the God of all hope. Father, thank you for your goodness. I thank you for this scripture from Hosea, that you want to transform the valley of trouble into a gateway of hope. Lord, it's easy for all of us to feel the sense of trouble in us and around us. But today, we declare out of that will come a new sense, a new deep rooted sense of hope. Hope in crisis, hope in trouble, hope in challenge, hope at times when others are finding it difficult. Lord, and I pray that that hope will influence the decisions we make, the way we lead. May there be a renaissance of hope in the city of Buffalo. And one of the names that you referred to in the New Testament is the blessed hope. Lord, let that blessed hope be ours today as the council deliberates. We ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Council members, are there any memorials today?
I do, Mr. President.
Council member Gullumbeck.
Thank you. Richard Barkoviac, a very, very nice man from the Black Rock, West Hurdle neighborhood. World War II veteran passed away this week. I knew him from the former St. Glorians Church, just, just a nice man, you know, the greatest generation. And also, Mordecai Morty Cotman passed away after a lengthy battle with cancer. He's going to be very sorely missed by his family and friends.
Thank you, council member Gullumbeck. Any others? We remember Don Allen Jr., Donald O. Allen Jr., who worked for the city for many, many years, who really loved what he did for other people. He often traveled with us on disaster relief missions across the country. And then, of course, locally, working with different organizations. He was a member of the United House of Prayer for our people, but he would lend himself out to anyone in the time of need. So remember those. Any others? Hearing no others, we always remember our men.
Council president.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see. I'm on that one screen. Yes, sir. I believe I heard the president pro temp.
Yes, thank you, council president. City of Buffalo lost a couple of residents in the past few weeks that we're all very familiar with in South Buffalo. The first being Mary Theresa Mann, who we actually lost as a result of this pandemic, unfortunately. Mrs. Mann was the mother of five, the grandmother of sixteen, the great grandmother of nine. She spent forty years as a crossing guard in the city of Buffalo and left an impression on countless people. I have many, many early memories from my childhood of Mrs. Mann, as I was friends with her grandkids and actually going to her house in the, in the old First Ward. And when I tell you she left an impression on you, she, she absolutely did. Mrs. Mann was also the mother, the mother-in-law, and the grandmother of several members of the Buffalo Fire Department who served our city. So obviously, they learned a lot from their mother and are giving back to their community. So she is going to be absolutely missed and remembered by her enormous group of friends and her extensive family. Another person that we lost in the South District was Mr. William Griffin, who is the mother of Maureen Higgins, who works in compensation and benefits. Mr. Griffin was the, the father of nine, a very large family here in South Buffalo. He was the, a proud veteran of the United States Navy, having served in World War II. And he is going to be greatly missed by his nine children, his children, and the extensive number of grandchildren and great-grandchildren as well.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I'm sorry if I don't see you. Just, yes, council member Wyatt?
I just want to ask for the prayers for the passing of one of our deacon chairmans of our deacon board, Fitzgerald Long, in the passing of his father, Pastor Nathaniel Long. He had a little illness, and he's going to be with the Lord, so we pray for him, as well as one of our members, her son passed, Danetta Reed, we pray for her, her family as well.
Yes, Joe Pitts. Anyone else that I'm missing?
Yes, council president, thank you.
Council member Bowman.
Yes, thank you, council president. We lost in the Lovejoy District Jeff DeBergelis, who was a long time, grew up in Lovejoy. He owned Mr. Lovejoy's, which was a popular restaurant on the corner of Lovejoy and North Ogden. So Jeff will be sorely missed, we're thinking of him. And I also wanted to send my condolences to the Allen family. Don Allen was a friend of the Lovejoy District. His father would always hang out in our office and stop down, so they will be sorely missed, and we're thinking of the family at this time.
Thank you. Any others? All right, we always remember our men and women who have given their life for the freedom of not only our country, but for the freedom of other countries across this world. We pause in these deliberations for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have, we do have a presentation by council member Wyatt.
It is my honor to acknowledge two individuals who are in the university district, but make a greater impact throughout the city of Buffalo. First, I want to recognize Steve Tyber in his efforts in Eight Days of Hope, as they continue to make a difference in the city of Buffalo. A couple of weeks ago, they gave about seventy-five hundred masks in a district where many were affected, and he saw a need, and he just did it. He didn't wait for someone to come and find him, he just did it. This past weekend, he gave away almost, it was fourteen hundred bags of groceries, a week's full of groceries, not just one bag, a week's full. That is surely a commendable need during a time that people are in desperate need. And I just thank him so much for the effort that he has given, not just in the university district, but throughout the city. So we just want to recognize him for his efforts. You want to say something, Steve?
I just want to say thank you. We, we love being in Buffalo and enjoyed getting to know a lot of you, and we're here for, we're here for a while, so we're excited to see what other doors God opens up, and appreciate all of you, and pray for you guys, all guys and ladies, pray for all of you, all the time, all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, Mr. Brett Begley, who is the owner of ABC Hardware, and has been in business, I think, more than thirty years, Brett. And he also has worked tirelessly in the community. He partnered with Steve with the mask that he gave away. He's also, since recently, a family was in a fatal fire. He's picking donations up for him, as well, he's providing masks and support to those in the district. He's been a supporter of the residents in the community for a long time, it's just not something that just happened. So we just definitely appreciate the impact that he's been able to make in the university district, but throughout the city. I believe some of you have gotten masks from him, so he was the only one in town. But he's not only paid, where you bought masks, he's also donated. So again, we thank him so much for what he's done and the difference that he makes in the city of Buffalo, especially during this time of pandemic. Thank you, Brett.
Want to say anything?
Yeah, we love the city of Buffalo, and if you, you guys see me, so if anybody needs help, just, you know, reach out. We'll do everything we can to help you, and, and anything, you know, we try to help out with tents, tables, chairs, whatever you need. And of course, the mask, the hand sanitizer, these type of things, because I don't think this is going away anytime soon. So the good news is that we have new supplies coming in, and we're hoping, we're hoping that the, we'll have normal distribution, that there won't be all this air freight that we're paying. So we're hoping that the prices will come down, and that's where we're at. So if you need anything, my name is Brett, I'll give you my cellphone number. Anybody that needs it, Wyatt has it, so just ask, okay?
Okay. Thanks so much, Brett. Thank you so much, Brett and Steve, for, again, making a big difference in our city, especially during this time of pandemic, it's greatly appreciated.
And I just want to echo, if I can, council member Wyatt, your words. Steve, who of course reached out to everyone about the bags of groceries, and when he told me, in those bags of groceries, if it came from a certain church or organization, they put that church's name in the bag, like, from that church. And I said to Steve, no, it's just say it's from you. He disagreed, he said, we, we have other branding, but he was more concerned about feeding people than getting attention. The same thing with Brett, you know, at the end of the day, we needed masks in, in our district, and I mean, we need them all over the place, but we do have some districts where it's pretty hard to find them at all, or for people to be able to afford them. And Brett stepped up, and we were able to get hand sanitizer and all kinds of gloves, I mean, and the masks. So I think it's an appropriate way to begin our meeting, especially after what the Reverend Dr. Warner has put before us, these two heroes who may not be recognized like some other folks, but they're keeping people safe and they're keeping them fed. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so we will continue, and we'll see you all soon, Brett and Steve. We'll have to, have to take you out of the meeting now. And we will continue with our meeting. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on April fourteenth, twenty twenty, are approved. Council members, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to the late files? Hearing no objections to the late files, we'll hear the entire agenda that is before us. Not taking away your right to pause this meeting to review an item if you have not had the chance. For the public who is watching via Facebook, welcome. This is right now our new normal, and this council has committed to transparency. All of our, all of our committee meetings are available on Facebook, are available for replay. And for those who need to read them, we will have very soon after each meeting the transcripts available. I believe I covered everything that we can go from the top.
Item number one, declaration of state of emergency.
Can we have the agenda on the screen, please? It is. I don't want it on my full screen.
If we have it on the full screen, the only trouble is I will not be able to see. So council members, you will have to verbally alert me if you have something you want to speak on, because I cannot see you.
Item number one, declaration of state of emergency.
I apologize, I don't have it on the screen. Does somebody have it on the screen? I don't have it on my screens for some reason. Somebody wants to call, call the items, that's fine.
You want me to do it, Dave?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do it?
Okay. Motion to receive and file.
Second by council member Bowman, I'm sorry, I just confabulated.
Item number two, pilot agreement for Mount Aaron Village.
Motion to approve items number two and three.
Second by council member Wingo, and on this item, this is Mount Aaron Village. The pastor and his partners have worked very, very hard on this project. The Mount Aaron Church has done one other project, much smaller than this one. And after they got their feet wet, they are now going to do a much larger project that will include, I believe, some retail space, some medical space, right, right here in the heart of the city, especially in an area that has, has really waited and wanted development, and that development is starting to happen on Broadway and other areas. So we congratulate the Mount Aaron Church and all of the work. This gentleman had community meetings that I attended that were packed, and I went to one community meeting that was full, and unless he stacked the deck, everybody in the room agreed with the development, so congratulations to them.
Roll call. Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority leader Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yeah.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number four, February and March twenty twenty cash flow report.
Motion to send the finance?
Second by council member Noakowski.
Item number five, city financial status report.
Motion to send the finance?
Second by council member Gullumbeck.
Item number six, appoint internal audit administrator.
Motion to send the civil service?
Second by, second by council member Farrelletto.
Item number seven, budget hearing and workshop schedules.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by council member Farrelletto.
Item number eight, change in contract, city hall improvements.
Motion to approve items number eight through seventeen.
Second by council member Noakowski.
So council member, just be, it goes all the way up to nineteen?
Okay, I couldn't see it. Oh, motion to prove to nineteen.
The motion stands adding to that motion, amended that motion for eighteen and nineteen to be included also. Next item.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
It's approved, next item.
Item number twenty, appoint laborer.
Okay, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, to civil service.
Second by council member Farrelletto.
Item number twenty-seven, Seneca One parking garage, garage rent transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second by council member Bowman, roll call.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
It's approved, next item.
Item number twenty-eight, city financial status update.
Motion to send the finance?
Second by council member Noakowski.
Item number twenty-nine, Buffalo Source Authority Meeting Minutes.
Motion to receive and file number twenty-nine through thirty-two.
Second by council member Wingo.
Finance committee, item number one, permission to enter into contract for school bus armed camera services.
Motion to approve.
And council member, you can approve too, also.
Mo. Motion, okay, we, we, did you move the legislation?
We're in legislation.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second by council member Scanlon.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
It's approved.
Resolutions, item number thirty-three, fee waiver for Habitat.
Motion to approve.
Second by council member Bowman.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Protem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wingo?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number thirty-four, COVID testing in Buffalo.
Motion to adopt, sending the rest to community development?
Is going to community development, with the remainder? Motion to adopt the results and the remainder to community development?
Yes.
Second by council member Wingo, and on this item, although we do see that there are some increases in testing, as a matter of fact, council member Wyatt had me on the conference call this morning with an agency who's interested in doing testing, Dr. Glick, Jericho Road, and others. I don't want to go down the whole list, because I'm going to miss somebody, but others are starting to come to areas that need the testing the most. And this resolution in which we have filed today continues to encourage that. I don't think that we could have enough testing sites, because I believe, as we've been told, that's what bring down, brings down the curve. So this is not in any way saying there are no testing sites. So anybody who receives it, including our county, we don't want somebody to think, oh, they're saying we don't have any. We're saying we need as many as we can, especially in impoverished areas, and especially in areas where people do not have the transportation to do a drive-through. It's like a, a fast food restaurant, you can't just walk up to the, to the drive-through if you don't have a car. You got to be able in some way to be serviced in a different way. So I just wanted to comment on that, so people would understand that this council and is trying to ensure that the testing sites are all over the city of Buffalo, especially in those impoverished areas. There's, anybody else? Okay, next item.
Item thirty-five, ordinance amendment for chapter three thirty-seven, preservation code.
In the legislation?
Second by council member Rivera.
Chairman, I'd like to just briefly talk on this one.
Absolutely, sir, you have the floor.
Chairman, this legislation or this amendment to section three thirty-seven of the preservation code was a result of a demolition that occurred in my district. And I think everybody's familiar, one eighty-four West Shidoka. Our staff and council member Bowman, and I believe even council member Gullumbeck had some concerns with the demolition that had occurred. We are looking to strengthen our preservation standards in the city of Buffalo. And what we've proposed, and this is only a proposal, we're going to vet it. People have contacted us via phone, via internet, and, and they're concerned with regards to the amendment that we're proposing today. It is only a proposal, we will vet it. We will have committee meetings once we're back in city hall, where they'll have a chance and opportunity to speak on their concerns with regards to any part of the changes that we're making. But it will give the preservation board forty-five days to process a landmark application for the historic properties subject to demolitions. And the other thing it does, it pauses demolitions while it's being considered by the common council or the legislative committee. So there is a pause. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to preserve buildings that should be preserved and landmark. We're looking to improve on the standards that we have right now in the city of Buffalo. And I just want to thank a council member Noakowski, his staff, central staff, our attorneys, and Gullumbeck for certainly making this an issue in the very beginning. So thank you very much.
Can I just have a moment, Mr. President? I just would like to echo the sentiments of the majority leader. I did hear from various community members all the way up until one fifty-five of this meeting, and I completely hear all sides, and I just want to reiterate that this is going to be sent to committee for a full discussion, and we look to improve this ordinance to make sure that what happened in West Shidoka never happens again, and that we have the best code possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And staff, you're doing a great job, but when we have a discussion, can you go back to the screen so that I can see the other council members? I really, really appreciate that. Anything else on this item? All right, thank you much. Next item.
Item thirty-six, local law intro number one, amendment chapter twenty and budgeting.
Okay, motion is in the legislation?
Second by council member Rivera.
And Mr. Chair, if I can speak on this item?
You certainly may.
Thank you, sir. I put this item forward, and I thank my colleagues who have supported it, because we are in a situation right now of a pandemic. We are in a financial crisis more than what we were before. As I looked through the financial reports, and I looked at the last year's audit, the amount that we budgeted of five hundred nine million, we missed by seventeen million dollars. So we've had some challenges in our finances over the last couple of years. Putting this forward in no way states that we're going to lay people off, or we're going to do something totally drastic. We should have done something a couple of years ago, and we didn't. I don't want to point any fingers, I don't want to lay any blame, but we're in leadership. It's our responsibility to take the lead, and I think it's time for us during this crisis to get our financial house in order. And I know it doesn't feel good, it's not the best situation, but I think our governor has said, in crisis, sometimes you get the body politic to change, and we definitely need a change. Over the last three years, we have not hit our revenue numbers. The seventeen, almost eighteen million from last year, during our deliberations, we talked about our concerns of the revenues not being there, not being part of the trend that we would see. Perfect example, we asked that eight million dollars be set aside or budgeted for real estate. We didn't come close to that eight million dollar number, but we are short. But again, I think we have to come into grips, that we have to take some real strong measures if we're going to save the city and not go back to a control board. Going back to a control board is not an option. It should not be something that we can revel in and say, oh, we were part of it, but it's something that we need to avoid at all costs. So this is nothing but something going forward to have a conversation, to put something in place that hopefully will stabilize our city and make some right decisions so that we can make sure that we have people employed by the city, gainfully employed, and not just people that we are abandoning ship and not putting something in place that, again, we can continue this great blessing that the city has come into as far as rebranding our city and being the city that is the great city of good neighbors. Thank you.
Mr. President, if you have time?
Yep, sir. Council member Scanlon? You, you have the floor. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon, you're muted. Nope. We're not hearing you, we don't wait until we can hear you.
Uh, looks like we lost Councilmember Scanlon, I'll send him our re-invite to the meeting right now.
Okay.
Mr. President, I had some comments.
Councilmember Gullumbeck, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, you know, I will, I, I'm gonna vote no on this, uh, uh, resolution, um, for a few different reasons, um, one of the things is, is that I will be honest and say that I'll take some of the responsibility over the past several years of not fighting harder for a fund balance reserve, um, but the reality is, is that I don't think any of us would have wanted to go to the mayor and say, mayor, let's raise taxes. Um, you know, because that's his purview, and we did not do that, uh, the one thing that the council can do during budget is make cuts from the budget, we can't make additions, but we can make cuts, um, once again, I suppose I'll take responsibility for that because I wasn't leading the charge with trying to make cuts from the budget so that there would be money that would be put into a fund balance, um, account. Uh, I think that, you know, discussing something would be one thing, but when I looked at the resolution when it came out last week, it looks like, you know, it's ready for adoption, we could have actually, if there was five or six votes today, we could have voted on it, and it could have been passed as is, except for probably some um, minor, uh, technicalities with it, um, it includes this year's budget um, for trying to do an increase in the reserve balance for this year. Uh, I think it's very interesting, and I, I was expecting it, that, uh, the controller did a, uh, letter to us today in which I believe she said that we're anticipating thirty-five million dollar shortfall in this year, um. I don't think trying to find any money for the, uh, um, you know, for reserves at this point would be wide fiscally prudent, um, at the same time that we're trying to scramble for thirty-five million dollars, where's that money gonna come from? Uh, you know, I don't think that we are going to be able to find it without doing something drastic this year. Um, and that's not with the budget that's coming up that we're going to get in the next couple of days. Um, you know, I was here back in two thousand and three when we had the last, uh, and perhaps one of the worst, if not the worst budget meltdowns in the city of Buffalo's history, and I'm gonna make a prediction right now that this is gonna be much, much worse. Um, this is gonna be very, very problematic, uh, I think that, you know, basically, you know, what we should be doing rather than rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic, you know, the icebergs hit, we're already floundering. We've got to start bailing, we've got to start making some very, very serious, uh, decisions with this budget, um, making cuts and trying to find as much money as possible that we're gonna be able to cut, you know, to directly impact our budget as is, and I don't think that we have the luxury right now to be able to look at a reserve fund, and I don't think that honestly, especially with, uh, being, having to do the budget meetings and everything, uh, online, it's gonna be very, very difficult, so, uh, I'm in the negative on this, I think that this is something that perhaps we should talk about, you know, down the road, you know, so, yeah, I'm guilty of punting at this point. Um, but I think that the budget crisis is far, far more important, uh, that we have right now saving jobs of people, saving services for the residents of the city of Buffalo is much more important than putting together a reserve account, thank you, Mr. President.
Council President.
You're welcome, Mr. Gullum, uh, Councilmember Gullumbeck, the chair recognizes Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President, as I stated yesterday during our caucus meeting, I am, uh, I'm greatly opposed to taking any action or having any sort of conversation right now that entails diverting any revenues from the upcoming budget and setting it aside for future use while we continue to be at the mercy of this global pandemic. You know, we do not know how long this situation will drag out, and we should not be setting aside funds for a future financial crisis when we are in the middle of one, as we should all know how difficult the decisions that could arise from this, um, COVID nineteen outbreak could be. As I stated yesterday, you know, Albany's telling us to anticipate up to a thirty percent reduction in state aid. Our sales tax revenues are being drastically impacted. Just a few days ago, we had the Senate Majority Leader in Washington telling municipalities they should consider filing bankruptcy because he's not inclined to provide assistance to states and municipalities, and I know today he said he'd be open to it, but he, he also indicated major caveats tied to that disclosure, so although I'll continue to hope for that assistance, I am not incredibly optimistic it'll happen anytime soon, but I pray that I'm, I'm wrong on that front. If we don't receive this federal assistance, the implementation of a policy like this would exacerbate the problems created by the pandemic by putting revenues, pulling revenues out of the budget that would pay for services and/or salary and leading to additional reduction in city services or additional layoffs throughout the city of Buffalo workforce. You know, we see municipalities all across the country bracing for a ten, twenty, thirty percent reduction in their workforce, and make no mistake about it, that if we do not receive that assistance, we're gonna be in the exact same painful situation. We do not know how long this ordeal will play out, we don't know if there will be a second wave of this, um, health scare, and whether the corresponding safety guidelines, which have absolutely created a safer environment for everyone, still impact the city financially, would be reinstated or reinstituted, you know, enacting a policy like this right now, I think it makes the council appear out of touch with what's taking place and the reality of what's taking place in the country and on the ground here in the city of Buffalo. Um, a couple comments were made yesterday during our caucus about the fact that, um, its current and past policies that have created this situation, but, um, when I look at the numbers, it seems as though we, a cou- just a couple of weeks ago, city of Buffalo was trending towards a surplus this year, and this health issue crippled the, the economy, not just locally, but obviously across the world. It wasn't our budgeting this year or last year that created this problem, and I didn't hear the, the, um, the United States Senate Majority Leader last week calling out Buffalo and referencing their issues. He referenced municipalities across the country, states across the country, that are incredible, in incredibly difficult financial situations. Uh, this is in communities across the country, it is not an issue of impropriety, improper budgeting by the administration or a lack of oversight on our part. This is an unforeseen global pandemic, which is, as I mentioned, really crippled the world's economy, also, um, the narrative that was being spun by a couple council members at yesterday's caucus that no one's calling for this to take place in two thou- the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget, that this is just a conversation, that no one's saying, you know, that we're looking to do anything this year, that we're looking, we're not looking to vote on a policy, but just have a conversation is factually inaccurate. I understand that conversations have been taking place for a few months regarding the fund balance policy, and I'm well aware that the city charter calls for the establishment of a fund balance policy. But this is not a group of talking points or a resolution to kick off a conversation that was filed. This is a local law presented to the Buffalo Common Council by city council members just filed this past Thursday, not a few months ago when conversations were taking place, calling for the establishment of this policy and for it to be enacted with this upcoming budget. It's not asking for a conversation to take place, it's a local law presented to a legislative body, and it's really, I think it's completely inaccurate to spin it any other way, so for, with that, with that being said, I am a hard no on this local law at this time, but I would absolutely be more than willing to and open to, in fact, eager to discuss ways to address our reserves in future budget years, so thank you, Council President.
You are welcome, anyone else?
Council President, Councilmember Dave Rivera.
You go from Dave Revere to Councilmember Farrelittle after Dave Revere is finished.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, we're not just looking at last year, uh, and the year before that. We're looking at a longer period of time where we've gone through over a hundred million dollars in reserve funds, and we're, we're the ones that actually voted for them. The mayor sent, uh, his recommendation to this common council, and this common council approved it. It's the fact that we don't have a reserve fund is each one of our responsibility, and I think it's our responsibility to make it right. And I disagree totally, um, we are having a conversation, uh, you may, uh, yes, we submitted a a, um, a, a legislation, but that legislation does not have full effect until we deliberate, until we vote on it, until it becomes law. It is a conversation, it is an exchange of ideas, it is a debate that happens in between, that is the process, that is legislation, that is government, that is how we enact laws, we just don't say what we're sending, we're approving, I don't think anybody was ready to approve it as it was yesterday or tomorrow, and I don't even know if this will take impact, uh, this year, but one thing I'm happy to hear is that two council members that are voting against it today are open to it in the future. I'm looking forward to one day in the future, coming back to you and saying to support a reserve fund policy that will restore the city's fiscal health, so when we do have a pandemic in the future, God forbid, that we do have some reserve funds to help us, so we're not crying to the state and the federal government, help us, help us, help us, that like the Board of Education, other municipalities, they have a reserve fund, so I'm looking forward to this conversation down the road. Perhaps not during this fiscal year, but down the road, and I'm glad to hear both of you and the other council members say, hey, we're looking forward to holding that conversation, because I'm looking forward to having that conversation. And I want to commend Councilmember Rashid Wyatt, who has worked diligently on this, and he is like, he's amenable. And he said it yesterday, to having this conversation, to tweaking and changing it, that's part of the process. Exchange of ideas, debates back and forth, uh, we're not just gonna force this down people's throat, and by the way, I don't need anyone to be my conscience to understand the impact that this is having on our community, we know it. I don't need somebody to tell me, oh, the, uh, the worst case scenario, we already know it, we watch the news, we see the news, we hear the governor, we hear what the federal government is doing, thank you very much for making us aware, but we want folks to know that we're looking to make sure that we have these safeguards and guardrails in place, so when we leave, we leave the city in a better position than we, when we, when we actually began. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, my, my, uh, I was muted, Councilmember Farrelittle, I think you were next.
Yeah, thank you, I, I talked about it yesterday, I, I talked about this in caucus, I think it's very important to have this conversation, um, however, the points that I brought up yesterday that I didn't feel comfortable addressing it as a ordinance amendment to a local law, um, I'm gonna stand by what I said yesterday, and I don't feel comfortable voting in favor of what is in front of us right now, which the item we're voting on is a local law amending the charter effective for twenty twenty, and I don't feel comfortable with that. I believe we should have these conversations, but for that reason, I will be in the negative.
Anyone else, Councilmember Wingo?
Yep, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, I am also going to stand firm with what I suggested yesterday in caucus with this coming to me, even though we've been having the conversations, and we all understand that the conversations are needed. Um, I do believe that, uh, this kind of caught me off guard, and uh, honestly, this is not a conversation starter, this is a proposed policy that's already been laid out. Um, and again, uh, it's, it's really about the timing, uh, no one could have predicted the global pandemic, and the reason why we're all in public service is because we believe we can do some good in these offices. And I don't think that anyone is trying to insult anyone, uh, as far as their empathy is concerned with the folks in their, uh, respective communities, but this, this, this is an ordinance amendment, and I was under the impression after caucus yesterday, that this would be substituted for another document, and the only document change that is on this in comparison to what was filed before is section one, which simply states this local law shall be known as the fund balance policy, that is the only change from this document, from what was suggested would be changed in order for us to start having the conversation on what a policy would look like. This, again, is something that is, uh, being presented to us, uh, with the intention to be discussed on this year's budget. And I don't think this is something that needs to go to committee at this point, being that we're considering it to be changed for this year's budget, I think it's a timing issue, uh, uh, you know, colleagues, I think it's a timing issue. So because of those reasons and the aforementioned reasons of both, uh, Mr. Gullumbeck and, uh, Mr. Scanlon, I, I would have to say that I would, uh, prefer that this is not go to, um, council as well, and, uh, that would be a negative to go to committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty, so, um, this item, and I think, uh, Mr. Wyatt said on the last call, I want to make sure that it's well represented. He is willing to amend this, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll defer, although he didn't ask to speak that, um, to him to be able to say it, um, I, um, will weigh in just the fact that in order to have, for this to be a law, um, as stated, it would have to go to committee, it would have to take, it would have to sit, uh, and age, um, but, um, at the, at the end of the day, conversation is about the future, um, again, I wouldn't, I don't think anybody on this call, uh, would vote, uh, next Tuesday to take this out of committee and send it forward, um, however, as I said yesterday, um, the reason for my support of the discussion, regardless of the form of how it has come, um, it is before us, and we do have to think about future years so that we do not have, um, a Titanic situation. Um, I've been on this council almost ten years, there's been the discussion, then no time was ever right, um, and I think that even now, the timing is not right, I agree with you all wholeheartedly. Um, I agree, the timing is horrible, uh, to talk about reserves, but I want to be clear, because the public uh, is watching it, I don't want them to think that, uh, when something like this comes before us, that means we're gonna tomorrow be trying to find some savings, no, this is the, the process of government, and this is, um, you can begin a, a, um, a law change or an implementation in many ways, um, and this is what the authors uh, have, uh, proposed, but it does not mean, and even the, um, uh, Councilmember Wyatt has said, it does not, they are open to amendments, so we'll continue to have that, uh, conversation. Um, but I think that everybody should know who, uh, is sitting even in the Zoom call or who is not, that there is not gonna be a vote tomorrow to start plucking money out of city budget, we're all concerned, we want to keep people working, every one of us. We want to keep our city services moving. All right?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Regular committees for next week are postponed. Budget hearings for city departments is Tuesday, May fifth, twenty twenty. Buffalo Board of Education, um, hearing will be Wednesday, May sixth, twenty twenty, and public hearing for the public will be Wednesday, May sixth, twenty twenty, times will be to determine.
So, um, just for the public, we, we, again, uh, for transparency, uh, and by law, our hearings have to be public. The governor's order does allow us to do it, uh, through social media, we want people to be engaged. When the budget is released, this is just a question that either Tiana or Malcolm can answer, will the budget be made available online right away so that people are able to look at the budget?
So, uh, Council President and to the public, from my understanding, administration have reached out to me, they will be filing it electronically, which means that it will become available as soon as we have it to the public.
So that's very important, um, the public is really engaging a lot more, um, and wanting to know and, and read, I mean, everybody's at home right now, so they have some time, uh, to study government more than before, um, so that will be available by the administration on our we- on the city's website, um, and that, uh, will be available to the public. Our public meeting, our public meeting in which there is a public hearing, um, it will be posted how people, and I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Marks, did you announce how they could, um, make comments, uh, for the public hearing?
Um, Council President, you are correct, at this time, I did not make that announcement, it, it will be another press release and advertisement on how the public can um, get questions or concerns to the common council.
And I think the Chief of Staff is on it, he has the phone number and email right now that we can share with the public.
Yes, sir, if anybody would like to comment on the budget and matters that come up with that, they can send an email to councilstaff@city-buffalo.com. And if they'd like to call in, the number is seven one six eight five one five one zero five. And on May sixth, during the public hearing, which will allow public participation, they can comment directly on the Facebook Live video at that time, again, that email is council-
Again, that email is councilstaff@city-buffalo.com and the phone number is seven one six eight five one five one zero five.
Oh, I'm not sure what that was. Does that mean our time is up? I got a bill here. I don't know if you all got that bill.
Uh, no, sir. Got, we got the paid account. It's, uh, there's no time limit.
Alright, I heard a bill on my head.
I got it, I got it.
Huh?
Having an, yeah. Uh, this Saturday, uh, we, we recognize this global pandemic has changed the way we do business, how we go about life, how we spend our time, and uh, we've all been involved in numerous initiatives, both public and private. We've gone through some very tumultuous times with our family and friends who have gone through this illness, this sickness, this virus, who has touched many of us uh, our lives, particularly, uh, Council President, you know, uh, you yourself has uh, have, have been personally inflicted. And we are grateful uh, to God that he uh, you know, seen you through that. But there are some people who are not so fortunate and we are still, even though the numbers have decreased uh, from yesterday to today, hundreds of people are still dying. Hundreds of people are still uh, succumbing to this virus. And Maston District wants the community to know that we are serious about helping. And I'm gonna say this publicly, uh, because we don't need anyone to think that any of us are lagging behind. But we have nothing to prove regarding our love, our community and the people in our community. We have nothing to prove to anyone with what we're doing, whether what we're doing is in public or not. I don't need you to see every house that I've visited or every dinner that I've given or all the, the things that we provided to people to prove that we care about the people in our community. I don't need anyone's approval about how much I care about my community. What I really would like to do though is just for the sake of folks knowing that um, things are available, continue with some of the public services that we've been engaged in. So on Saturday in the Maston District, we will be giving away masks um, at Delving Rider. And if you didn't know, today, even right now, at the Delving Rider Center, there is free food uh, for pickup right now. If you want to go to the Delving Rider Center, there is free food available to you to pick up right now. And I'll be the first to apologize if we've not uh, done a great job at advertising what we've been doing to try to provide some relief to some of these families uh, who are in need. But uh, if you go to the Delving Rider Center right now, they're giving away food. And if you show up on Saturday between the hours of ten AM and two PM, you'll be able to get free masks. And again, those are provided for us uh, through ABC Hardware, but we pay for those. Um, we don't want to take advantage. Uh, we do know that businesses need business. We pay for those masks for uh, the community. You don't have to live in Maston to come to Delving Rider and pick up those masks. Uh, but again, we are uh, providing those masks for the community of those who show up while supplies last. While supplies last. And again, the federal government has given away those stimulus checks. Please, uh, do not pay absorbent amounts of money to have your checks cashed. There is a federal guideline that has to be followed. If that is the case, please, and I'm telling everyone who is listening to this broadcast through this uh, Facebook Live right now. If you believe someone is, is, is charging unfairly to cash your check, Facebook Live it and post it. And if you've already paid it, post your receipts. That way, we don't, we just don't have integral data, but we have the proof that some folks are uh, paying two hundred dollars to get a check cashed. I just, I, I can show you the inboxes that we've received in Maston District from the folks who are charging and overcharging for folks to get their stimulus money. That is absolutely utterly ridiculous, unconscionable. So please provide us with that information. But again, uh, I know this was a quite long announcement, but we really want folks to understand that we are here for you. We are not social services. The common council is not social services. However, we do provide social services because we care about the quality of life of our constituents. We work hand in hand with the uh, county legislators to ensure that you are provided with certain services that are absolutely necessary. And again, with that said, Saturday between the hours of ten and two, we'll be giving away masks for folks in the city of Buffalo. As well as on Friday and Saturday, Open Buffalo, under the direction and leadership of Franchelle Parker, uh, they've provided, uh, of which we are a, a partner with them as well. They're providing uh, free masks and gloves uh, for folks who come through. We will announce the location and time that will be given by Open Buffalo and Franchelle Parker. We'll be letting you all know when and where you can pick those up. But in the meantime, please continue to reach out to our office. You can dial Maston at eight five one five one four five. We also have our Facebook page. So again, Mr. Chair, thank you for this time. I apologize for taking so much of it, but we just had to get some things, uh, make some things clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other announcements for your districts?
Mr. Chair, thank you, sir. Um, I just want to um, make a note of next week, Wednesday, May sixth, is National Nurses Day in the United States. And I just want to uh, thank them and uh, you know, make it known that they are a critical part of our first responders during this pandemic and always, and just want to make a note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and to all, all of our, of my colleagues, thank you for, I know this is all different and learning curve is a little different. Thank you for the bait. Thank you for the discussion. Because um, I think what the public needs to know, um, and I truly believe this, all of my colleagues, that your hearts are in the right place. We're getting through this as best as we can. But the people of the city of Buffalo should know uh, that I served with eight uh, colleagues who they care about their communities. So thank you all for doing what you're doing. Although sometimes people can't see you because we're in the house or we have to mask up and they don't see your face. But uh, I personally know that each of you are doing uh, the best you can uh, in your district. So thank you. Motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before that final motion is made, I don't believe a motion was uh, ever carried and seconded for the last item.
The last item doesn't usually have a motion and there are enough votes to send it to committee.
Was it, was the, so we don't need a second for the motion?
If, if it doesn't have the second for the motion, Councilmember Bowman's second, I'll make sure.
I'm just making sure.
Thank you, sir. Motion? Motion to?
Motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Noakowski, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.